Thank you so much, TJ. Good morning, Board of Commissioners and to the citizens of Douglas County. Today, we will call our August 3, 2020, meeting to order. And due to the continuation of the coronavirus pandemic and the increase of the community spread, the meeting is being held under the virtual technology, under the Georgia's Open Meeting Act. Of obvious reasons, it is important for us to remain vigilant with washing our hands, wearing a mask, and also certainly the mask is recommended and watching our social distancing as we unify to sustain our health. So we're planted by ear, certainly, of course, this is a moving target. But of course, we want to make sure that all the Board of Commissioners and also the citizens of Douglas County remain safe. With that being said, clerk, public comment this morning, I believe you said we have one citizen who signed up this morning. And if you could read the instructions, clerk, to allow our citizens to understand protocol.
Yes, ma'am. Give me just one second here. Okay. We ask that you keep your phones muted when you're not speaking. Muted and your camera off. When the chairman calls your name or when I call your name, you can turn your camera on and your microphone back on, and you'll have three minutes to comment. I will notify you if your time is up and ask you to wrap up your comments. And once the public hearing is, or once the public comment is over, if you choose to remain on the meeting, you're most welcome to do so. Just please remember to keep your microphone and video muted. If you wish to leave the meeting, you may continue viewing the meeting on live web stream on DC TV 23 Facebook's page. Okay, so we had one citizen sign up to speak, and that is Mr. Henry Mitchell IV. You may begin now.
Hey, how you doing? I just wanted to just reiterate about the resolution, but for the most part, I don't know if it's been created yet. I'm hoping to hear it in this meeting or the next. But if it hasn't been created yet, I'm hoping that you guys can possibly add in the Highway Bypass 92 being named after Frederick Douglass, saying that the county was most likely named after Frederick Douglass. That's really my only request. And if you have created the resolution, thank you to all the county commissioners. I hope that we can definitely move forward with what we need to do for the city of Douglasville. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry Mitchell IV. Thank you so much, and we appreciate your contribution to county government. I would like to also commend Henry Mitchell III for working with the communications teams to expand our bandwidth and to allow our citizens to come on and to speak, certainly with our technology. Before we were, of course, what I was doing was asking the citizens to call in and just certainly send your personal, your individual district commissioners an email, or either myself or Mark Teal. But today, our bandwidth has been expanded, and it seems like the target keeps moving. So this is a good thing, so our citizens can come on and speak. And Lisa, there is a deadline for the citizens to sign up, which is the Friday before the meeting. So it sounds like we have a process in place, and I'm real excited about that process. With that being said, we're going to move on to our agenda if no one has any comments. And thank you again, Henry Mitchell IV. And tell Henry Mitchell V I said hello. He's amazing. Next, we will move to Board of Commissioners. I want you, if you could, tomorrow, take a look at the minutes and be prepared to approve accordingly. And then we're going to move to tab number four, which is Authorization to Accept the CARES Act Funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission in the reimbursable amount of $112,980.26 to provide materials and hot meals for seniors with immediate needs due to COVID-19 and amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Dr. Gilchrist, I see you. Dr. Gilchrist?
Madam Chair, she, I don't, she's not here today. She had a previous engagement. So she asked me to handle this item for her. So this is a grant of $112,980.26. There is not a required match. And it will just help with the meals and all the other services we provide to seniors. This is in addition to the, this is in addition to the first Family First Coronavirus Act, where we received $65,594.
This is certainly good news. Certainly, the older Americans Act have really stepped up and assisted during this COVID-19-related circumstance. And certainly, it's the chairman who sits for A R C, for Senior and Aging and Health Resources. This, we were really excited about this funding for Douglas County. And of course, other counties received funding too, and it was based on population size. So this is a pretty substantial amount for Douglas County. Board of Commissioners, do you have any comment or anything before I move on?
Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chairman, I hear your voice.
Yes. Okay, I'm coming. All right. Real quick, so I know we have, at least I believe we still have a meeting set for Thursday to talk about all of our related grant funding associated with COVID. So I don't want to get ahead of that. But I think this is part of that, which is I'd like to see, okay, we've got this grant. How will we, and I understand this money is dedicated to our seniors. I'd like to know, well, how will we spend that? Is it over a couple of weekends? I mean, I'm looking for, and again, County Administrator, it's okay, because I believe Dr. Consuela should be able to address this. So hopefully tomorrow, when we're at the agenda, when we're actually voting on this, that she can speak to it, because I want a little bit more detail. I'm trying to get my mind around, we're getting this money, but it's sort of, we got, we got the money, but how are we using the money? And again, is it programs? Is it, is it every weekend, every other weekend? I mean, what is the plan for use of this money? But again, Madam Chair, I know we're going to get into all of that on Thursday. So I just want to make sure that this is part of that conversation. I yield the floor, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're going to, any other questions from the boards or concerns? And this morning, our Board of Commissioners, certainly I did not call roll, but we do have one commissioner that's not here today due to a family emergency, and that's Commissioner Guyer. I believe I've seen everyone's, everybody's initials. I've seen Commissioner Mitchell, certainly you, Vice Chairman Robinson, and Commissioner Carthay, and I believe you're on the line. I think I saw your initials. I don't want to assume.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I thought I saw you, but I just wanted, I didn't want to just, I might have been dreaming, but I wanted to make sure. Okay. With that being said, we only have one commissioner missing this morning, and she has an emergency, family emergency. We're going to move on to tab number five, Authorization to Accept a Georgia 4-H American Corps Service Position Grant for the period of September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2021, which requires a county contribution of $2,900 and amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And is Susan Culpepper on here today? Susan Culpepper? Mark, you're going to have to take this one as well and explain, and then I'm quite sure Commissioner Carthay has a question for you. I see her. Mark?
Yes, ma'am. Hold on just one second.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes.
I think that was the previous agenda. We revised it, and that had been, that agenda item had been removed.
Okay, this item, this has been removed, Commissioner Carthay. Okay, we're going to move on. Okay, we're going to move to tab number six. And I won't change the ordering of the number this morning. I'm quite sure, clerk, you have that resolved tomorrow. Business item, tab number six, Authorization to Approve a Contract with Dorian Precision Systems Inc. for a Driving Simulator to be used by Connect Douglas and Risk its Safety at a Cost of $111,500 with the Federal Transit Administration Grant paying 80% or $89,200 and authorize the chairman to sign related documents. Director Watson, or is it someone here speaking on his behalf? Director Watson?
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Jamal Shepherd. Can you hear me?
Yes, hey, Jamal. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and Mr. Gary's absent, and we would like to...
Can you speak up a little bit, Jamal? Speak, we can, we, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. In the absence of Gary Watson, we would like to have this approved simulator for the use of the Connect Douglas Transit System and also Risk and Safety Management to perform all of our training with the new driver and new employees, as well as the current employees.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Or comment? Vice Chairman Robinson, I know you have a comment.
Yeah. It is Director Valentina?
Yes, sir.
He's here.
Can you give us a little bit more insight? And I could barely hear Jamal, and so it's not anything wrong with that. I just, I wanted to clarify what I was listening to. Can you give us a little bit more insight on this one? Clarify for us.
Certainly, be happy to. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This, this driver simulator is something that had been envisioned to be housed in the annex or the expanded area of the Transportation Center. And really, it is intended to provide a level of training for the operators of equipment in the Transit Services Division, as well as countywide. It will serve, although the funding is from the federal government, from Federal Transit Administration, there is a provision for county employees to be trained, similar to the training that is afforded typically in high school before the students begin their driving, as they practice their, their driving. And this is intended just as that, to keep the skill level high for the bus operators, the van pool program, and also county employees. It is being funded through 80% through federal funds with a 20% match that is in the budget already.
All right, so when you say in the budget, that's why you tee that perfectly. We're adding the budget, is it, what line item are we pulling this from to do the match?
I don't know the specific line item. I don't have the budget in front of me, the roster, but it is, it was included in the Transit Services Division budget in anticipation that this would be coming this year.
Right. Just need to validate that for tomorrow. That's all we need, just that specific item. You're good. Thank you, Miguel. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much, Jamal Shepherd, and also thank you, Director Valentin. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to tab number seven, which is Authorization to Finalize and Distribute a New Computer Use Policy for All Douglas County Employees, as recommended by the Technology Committee. And we have our own Director Russ Martin here this morning from Information Technology. Russ, and also Dat, I'm sorry, Dat Lou as well. So Russ, you have the floor.
Yes, good morning, Chairman. So we presented this to the board, I think, two meetings ago. And one of the, one of the concerns, questions, suggestions that came out of the board was that perhaps we needed to add some language around how we handle video conferencing and the backgrounds that we allow for video conferencing, and the current computer use policy did not address any of that. So Dan and I went back to the drawing board on this one. We did add several new bullets and a paragraph, and I'll read the new paragraph in its entirety for people who didn't see it. It says, "Any video conferencing software must be approved by the Information Services prior to installation and use. To maintain consistency and professionalism, Information Services will provide approved background images that must be used during any video conference with the public where an employee is representing the Douglas County Board of Commissioners or the interests thereof. Instructions for the location, installation, and use of these approved backgrounds will be provided by Information Services Department upon request. It is understood that some mobile devices that are capable of joining video conferences do not have the ability to define specific background images. In these cases, it is the responsibility of the employee to ensure that no image or content is displayed that would violate others' privacy or security, that would be considered offensive, fraudulent, or harassment, or that would violate any local, state, or federal law code or ordinance." So that is, that is what we added to address the background image issue, video conferencing. And if this is approved, we'll move forward with the instructions and the image installation. And that is the only change that we made since the last time we presented this.
Thank you so much, Russ. I would like to commend you and the Technology Department for doing a magnificent job doing this COVID-19 pandemic. Certainly, we've stretched our arms around some, some big changes in terms of innovation for our technology, and I appreciate everything that you all have done to keep our services running smoothly. Although we are telecommuting, we have not missed a beat. In some instances, we are telecommuting, and also you've been working with other, our other partners, such as Google, to make sure we have enough Chromebooks and things that are needed to allow our staff to be efficient from their homes. So I appreciate you. This has been huge, and I just wanted to say that before I yield to my fellow commissioners to see if they have any comment about what you just said. But I wanted to commend you for that. And I know earlier I mentioned Commissioner Mitchell about technology, and I meant to say our Technology Department has stretched us. I know our Communication Department has provided a wealth of information, but we could have done that without the support and the lead of our technology team. So thank you all so much. Our Board of Commissioners, I yield to you. You've heard the additions that are going into the policy, and just wanted to get some feedback on if you're satisfied. I'm certainly at the will of the board. If you're satisfied, we'll move forward. Vice Chairman Robinson, I see your hand.
Yep. Yeah, the paragraph that was added was, was something that obviously I sponsored to be added. This is just for, I'll speak to District Two and then broadly, whoever is beyond that can hear this. As we, to Madam Chair's point, as we begin to embrace technology, as we move into this, this new, new, and it's probably not going to go back, we're being stretched in a place where we're not going to go back, and it won't be the same, it'll be a different same. But with use of technology, we were thrust into our homes. And while initially it was cute, we, there's a standard that still needs to exist. Whereas most private companies, we have telecommuting policies, they're perfected, and they had no problem with sort of that, because the sales forces and people like that, you've got to have your desk, you have standard, you got to have your phones, all that, they're used to that. We were thrown overnight, right? We were thrust into people's homes. And there were some things that were occurring that, as we get visibility to homes, as far as, you know, I have no problem with pets and children and spouses and so forth, but it became a line where people were offended, but because they were looking in people's homes, and they may saw certain signs or symbols that were offensive both ways. And so I think there is a standard that should be held, and, but I also respect the privacy of somebody's home, which is why I add this, like, no, you cannot regulate someone's home. Whatever they want to put in their house is their house, but it doesn't represent, obviously, the county accordingly. But there has to be a separation, and so it was a simple fix, we just put a buffer. No different, the difference between residential and commercial property in our land use is like, okay, when they both are thrust together, there has to be what's called a buffer, a separation. Like, I really don't want to see that big old building. Can you put some trees up? Can you put some mountains up? I think you get my, my, it was figuratively, but I think you get my point. And so, Madam Chair, I'm just, I'm highlighting the importance of this. Though it's small, it was important. In other words, we believe in, obviously, the expression, the privacy of one's home, whatever your ideology is, whatever you believe in, it's all good, but let's separate the two from the workplace. So I appreciate Fred Perry, the Director of HR, who also may have weighed in on this matter as well. Thank you, TJ, Russ Martin, all you guys who all knew that I had weighed in on this matter that was important to me, as well as legal. Madam Chair, that's all I want to say, and I yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Carthay?
Thank you.
When I, now, since I see, when I see y'all pop up, I said, you ready? Commissioner Carthay?
Thank you, Chairman Jones. My question is actually to the Board of Commissioners in regards to the last paragraph that Director Martin added. Does that also apply to committee meetings? Now, I know we're talking about meetings amongst ourselves, and, but we also have like parks and regs, Board of Elections, those types of meetings. Does this also apply to that?
You want me to answer the question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. We would love for that, because we want to cast a wide net, and just the, it's just a matter of training to show those, our staff, how to click on the button. But if I've learned how to do it, I know it's pretty easy to do. So can we make sure that that training is implemented? And I know certainly Commissioner Mitchell is the chairman of the Technology Committee. We want to see what we can do to maybe get the instruction, well, not maybe, but get the instructions out to our staff, so they will know how to put the buffer behind their screens to allow us not to be able to see in the house and look at the, hear the dark, barking dogs and things of that sort, so.
And, and thank you, Chairman Jones. The only reason I say that is because we do have other committees, such as the Board of Elections and, and different boards, whose members are not employees of the county, yet they do represent the county, because they sit on those boards and they are appointed. And I was, unfortunately, I had one of the committee members to send me a photo of someone who had Confederate flags behind them in the meeting, and it was very offensive to her, and she asked what we could do. Now, I knew Director Martin had already begun doing this program, this paragraph, but I just wanted to make sure that each department head and each board understood to, to basically just not necessarily tell people that you can't, but kind of monitor that, because we do want to be sensitive to everyone's needs and situations. So to just kind of help their committee members, to remind them that you are going before a wide audience, most of what we do now is on Facebook, and we, we just need to make sure that even our boards, as well as county employees, are adhering to this new policy.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman Jones.
You're welcome. In fact, I just don't want to overstep myself in terms of technology, Russ. I may be going, those, for example, our board members, I know they're not using the county computers when they're on these team meetings, but where their computers allow them to click and add a background, I'm not sure how that works. I didn't want to go too fast. How does that work? Can you explain to myself and the board? And then I think I heard Commissioner Mitchell in the back, and he's next.
Okay.
So there's, there is going to be a device-specific set of functions within Teams. If you're using Teams, the app that you downloaded, the functionality should exist on a standard laptop to be able to add that background. If you're using the web version through an internet browser, it doesn't necessarily allow you to change the background if you access it that way. How it works on an Apple device, I'm not sure. And then if you're using a small mobile device, like a phone or, or some tablets, again, it's not going to allow you to, to change the background. That's why we did make sure that, although we will have, I worked with TJ Jalinski just to create a couple of branded backgrounds that we could send out to everybody, and we'll, we'll get that piece done. So those look really nice, and they're not going to overwhelm any backgrounds. But at the same time, there are some people who aren't going to be able to do that, just because the technology doesn't allow it. So the, the language in that paragraph does, to Commissioner Carthay's concern, right? You know, we do have that general statement, that if it's, if it's seen as harassing or illegal or any of those things, that those are inappropriate and shouldn't be used. Now, this is a computer use policy that will be distributed to employees. So how we disseminate that to people who aren't employees and force them to adhere to it, I think, is a slightly different question that we might need to address offline as a different project. I'm not exactly sure.
Madam Chair, can I ask Russ something?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Russ, the policy seems to be reaching Commissioner Carthay's point, mostly tied to employees. And while a lot of access is occurring on privately-held computer, I would assume, or maybe some are issued by the county, but to the extent these boards are involved, is there, is there not a way that when Teams is being used, or county software, or the county access point, whether it be video server or otherwise, is there not a way that the use policy can be accepted on the screen before you're allowed to go in it by any user, and the policy broaden that anybody piggybacking, not just vendors and not just employees, but anybody, right now, me? I'm using your Microsoft Teams on my personal computer. To access point, is there a screen that can pop up that says, "You accept this policy"? And, or is that too much? I know there's a lot of words here, but it, maybe it is a separate policy, but I'm just wondering, is there a point-of-use button that can be pushed? If, say, you've read it, and you will buy by it, then when somebody doesn't buy by it, they use, they lose access point to it?
I'm not sure that kind of splash green, splash screen authorization exists within Teams, but we can look into it. We can have a look into it.
Well, this is, this is, this is a very good, this is a very good starting point. Madam Chair, we got to echo, it's probably a mic.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell, I heard you earlier. Did you, on the way in? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just, just one, just one small point about everything that was being said. I agree that we need to definitely take a hard look at how, how do we, Russ, kind of, once you click, it automatically kind of drives in with those types of cookies. Not sure if that's doable, but that's worth the conversation. The other thing is, for those of us who think that we're going to stop and eliminate crying kids, barking dogs, and any other type of audio, that's probably not going to be what this is all about. This is strictly for the video imaging in the back. So I noticed a couple of us talked about, you know, the barking dogs and, and all that good stuff. Don't expect that. Am I correct, Russ? So, so Russ, I just want to make sure it was clear that, that, that part is out. So all the barking dogs and all that, you just got to kind of put those guys up. You won't be able to pull out a barking dog audio that may be already the backdrop, but the backdrop itself, they can, they can kind of fix. But that's the only small piece of that. I just want to make sure that, don't expect to be overreaching if we're trying to, you know, with the kids and the dogs and all that good stuff, we overreaching. Outside of that, I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. That's a great point. I know wishful thinking, we want the dogs to go away, but you're right, we have to put the dogs away. I appreciate that. I think we just, sometimes we overextend our wishes, and certainly just, I know you don't work magic, Russ, but however, just, if you could just make sure the backgrounds are there, appreciate you. But I needed a good laugh this morning. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, if there's nothing else for our technology. Yes, Commissioner Carthay?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Jones. One, one of the things that I would like, and we can have a side conversation, Director Martin, or either Dat Lou, is to, or even Director Perry, this may be one for Director Perry, to ensure that whoever sets up the Microsoft Teams meeting, that they reach out to those individuals that they are inviting on, just to kind of let them know that policy and what is expected of them for that board meeting or that committee meeting. I think if we just let people know ahead of time that this, we're conducting official business, that people will adhere to that, so we don't have to be so rigid and come up with the whole new script. I think if someone is setting up the Microsoft Teams, then they know who's going to be on that call more than likely. But that was all. Thank you, Chairman Jones.
You're welcome, Commissioner Carthay. I hear you, Vice Chairman Robinson. I hear you.
Yeah. And again, I'm very sensitive, trying to regulate someone within their home, and we're trying to balance the two, right? But I think there is a productivity component, which is if you're on a board, a committee, I mean, I mean, County Clerk Lisa Watson, we have, what, about 15, 20 board? County Clerk Lisa Watson, we have, what, about fifteen, twenty boards, formal boards that we appoint to, planning and zoning, cemetery, you name it, whatever. Right? You got just easy math, fifteen, twenty boards, including committees, what, ten committees, Madam Chair, that you've created, our meetings, et cetera. So you're talking about twenty-five sets of meetings that are at a base official. Through all those should be some type of policy says if you're on these boards, that you're held to a higher standard. You don't get to be convenient. We're all, that that was my whole point of all this. You can't isolate the Board of Commissioners and hold them to a standard, and let everybody else be sort of as they go along. And we're sort of going about this backwards. Like, no, if you're on this committee, you agree to this policy to conduct yourself and as well as participating in meetings. So I think there is an HR component to this, or some clerk, I mean, we can talk about this offline. But I think the behavior is within the person. I think I think the technology is just a tool. It's an enabler. But we, as those who are on these boards, have to recognize you, you can't be offensive. You've got to do it in a certain way. So it's something to think about. If you're participating on behalf of the public, perhaps, say, to be neutral, sort of to keep the ideology out. And 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 so that's something for us to consider offline. I also know if we can solve it now, I'd like to at least go ahead and embrace what with a couple of word tweaks that y'all said earlier to advance to the committees. But I I think that this needs to have further conversation, but don't stop the technology recommendation is coming forth. Two separate things. I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. All right, I think we're good. And also just wanted to add to what Commissioner Carthens mentioned. Also, is it any way you all could also, for those particular board members, we need instructions on how to go in and set our backgrounds? If that you could give them that information, just starters to allow them to just come there for me with the practice. Now, since I've learned how to do it, it's pretty easy, but at first I was a little, did not understand how to do it. So now, if you could do, just make the information available to our our board members on our various boards and also to our directors and our Board of Commissioners, okay? Thank you. All right, well, thank you all so much, and we're going to move on to tab number eight. Tab number eight is Authorization to Renew an Agreement with the Comprehensive Program Services Incorporated CPS for Six Months, July 1st, 2020, and December 30th, 2020, to provide enhanced security electronic services for all covered electronic systems as defined in the agreement of Douglas County Sheriff's Office at a total of eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final legal review. Major Holmes, I believe you're on the line. I saw you earlier.
Yeah, good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, this is the, I'm going to try to turn that part down. This is the renewal for the electronics. It covers all the cameras, the door locks, and visitation for the for the sheriff's office. We entered into a six-month contract at the beginning of this year to do this, and we're just asking to get this renewed for the next six months. Basically, the sheriff's just trying to keep his options open and what he's for the future. So we're trying to cover the other half of the year for this.
Okay, thank you so much, Major Holmes. You know, the first question I'm going to lead off with is this contract, I know, but how long have we paid this particular contract? When is when are our next, just if you could tell me that, let me ask one question at a time.
The, when we enter into this contract, a couple of years ago, I think, maybe, not real sure. It has been a one-year contract till this point, but we had decided to go to a six-month. And we were doing some evaluation and stuff on it, and we're going to have to do the other six months as it stands and and kind of make a determination at that point about renewing next year.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I'm not sure.
A couple of years.
Yeah, we've had Black Creek since we built the jail, but this is the contract that entered into using Eric and Stanka.
Okay, okay, I'm quite sure the Board of Commissioners have some questions if they do. Any Board of Commissioners, do you need to weigh in? Are you okay in?
No, I'm weighing in on this one.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, I believe I heard your voice. Go for it.
Yeah, no, this is, obviously, I know the importance of our law enforcement and detention center. I know the amount of money that we put into that center. I understand its vitalness to the general fabric of of local municipalities. So I'm 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 okay with that. I just want to highlight that, again, for the money that we spent, and especially a selling point was it was supposed to be state-of-the-art, and we can run this whole thing from one area like Captain Kirk, right? We could see the whole facility. We've got this high-end camera system and all this great stuff, right? So now it's, you know, it's a few years later, we can look back on that. And I highlight, as I say, to 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 Major's point, you know, whoever Black Creek, whatever this firm was that was supposed to be running it, they sold us the solution, but they couldn't maintain it. They they couldn't provide us with the services, the service level that we expected, that we we that we we rightfully deserve. And so, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, Eric Johnson, who was with CPS, who he was basically the Moreland Russell of today's floss. You know, he made about two million on that particular project accordingly. And so we we obviously evolved him and and obviously Stan Copeland, the deputy chief, deputy chief for us into that project to sort of oversee a very critical component. Don't get me wrong, I get it. Now, wouldn't have, I I feel very comfortable with Chief Copeland or Stan Copeland accordingly, no offense, Chief. But I think you guys get my point to question because, okay, so we've got a hundred and eighty-four thousand times to a hundred sixty thousand dollar contract. They're maintaining it. What are they maintaining? I mean, are we, are we, are we comfortable? We've had to replace those cameras, what, twice? At least, at least, I think, and Commissioner Mitchell probably could correct me if I I missed that, but I know at least twice we revisited something that was supposed to be state-of-the-art. So, I mean, what do they have to report? And we may not have to do this here because I know that this is, I won't call it national security, but I am sensitive that we can take this offline. So how about this? I'm going to say, Major Holmes, I'm going to reach out afterwards. I I want to maybe a more direct briefing on how things are going. But for the sake of the contract, I'm I'm willing to leave it because it is essential. But I need to give that background for it for those that are paying attention. So, Madam Chair, I yield. Thank you. I'm good. I'll reach out to Major Holmes later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Major? And if not bored, I'm going to move on to the next item. Thank you so much, Major Holmes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And and I forgot to thank you earlier, Russ, and also Datlu. I apologize, I was moving so fast. Thank you all as well for coming to work with us this morning. We're going to move on to tab number nine, Authorization to amend the elective provisions of the ACCG Retirement Services Plan Agreement for certain elected and appointed officials in Class Four employees, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Perry, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, Madam Chair and the Board of Commissioners. Madam Chair, we're bringing this agenda item back before the Board of Commissioners. And just to summarize this amendment, this amendment would allow for Class Four employees to elect in-service retirement benefits at the time they reach the normal retirement age of sixty-five. The Class Four employees consist of the following elected and appointed officials, the Board of Commissioners, the coroner, the magistrate, the sheriff, the tax commissioner, clerk of Superior Court, the chief magistrate, probate court judge, state court judge, juvenile court judge, Superior Court judge, the solicitor and the district attorney. These would be the individuals that comprise the Class Four employee. There was some question and some conversation the last time we had this before you all in regards to this benefit. And I was given some action items to do, and I did want to report to the board that I spoke with with Paul Bates from GEP Court, and he did confirm with the actuaries there that allowing in-service retirement at the the age of sixty-five with our plan, it would not create any additional cost and nor would it add to any current unfunded liability for us. So it was, it would be virtually no budget effect to have this this amendment move forward. It was also a concern and question about the Board of Commissioners and being involved in this change and wanting to consider the possibility of taking the Board of Commissioners out of the Class Four and move forward with with all remaining titles that I just mentioned. That is a possibility, and I can move forward with with removing the Board of Commissioners out of the Class Four so that you would not be voting on something that would would affect you all. And with that, I yield, Madam Chair, and I can respond to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Perry. Appreciate you taking the time to take a deeper dive and certainly find the information that's required for the Board of Commissioners to make a certainly diligent and, I guess, precise decision based on their own opinions. Board of Commissioners, do you have anything to add or anything to weigh in with what Fred just presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yeah, I was one that actually asked or brought to inquiry about the Board of Commissioners being removed from this. It's always about being consistent. When the Board of Commissioners had to advocate and sign up for their two hundred dollar expense account late last year, an expansion of that, we we had to go through a very formal process because we are the highest governing authority at the local level. In other words, we can't self-deal. So I I had a problem with us being lumped into this. Do I know the spirit was just to make all class, this this special Class of Four? No, we, I I I thought that that was not consistent. In other words, if we're going to vote on something for ourselves, then we need to put it in a formal public hearing process that we had to go through for that. And second, my second point is, is that none of us should be recused, recuse ourselves from that. In other words, if you if you benefit from this and you want this, then you have to vote for it. You don't get a sidestep and let your peers carry the weight. So recognizing that one of our peers, and this is unrelated, this was already on the agenda, but now I recognize one of our peers are not here, I definitely want to just take it off of that, and I I have no problem, Madam Chair, letting it go forward, lest the Board of Commissioners, unless my other peers have an issue with that. I'd say take it off and let it go forward, minus the Board of Commissioners. I yield.
Okay. Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners? Well, Fred, what I want to do is allow to go forward tomorrow, however, but for the Board of Commissioners, we'd like to see that come back in the form of a public hearing in a later date, maybe the not the next meeting, but probably the one in September. You could, we could go with the first and second, okay, in September, but certainly want to deal with this issue at hand now, okay?
Okay, so Madam Chair, we'll we'll make this effective the first pay period in September?
No, not this. I'm just saying this, what we're looking at today, you can make that, once the Board Board of Commissioners vote, then that determine your next earliest pay period for, you know, once that, yeah. But I've been saying for the Board of Commissioners, public hearing to allow the Board of Commissioners to to, we need a open, we need a public hearing for the Board of Commissioners to determine whether we will be eligible for this additional, this this, I call it, additional retirement benefit. Yeah, so I just want to make sure. So we want to go, because we are the highest, as as Commissioner Mitch, not Mitchell, but Commissioner Robinson just mentioned, we are the highest board, or should I say, highest elected officials in terms of authority. So we want to make sure that we put this before a public hearing so the citizens can be engaged and involved, okay? Because we want, we don't want to self-deal, but move on, move forward, just putting this other piece without the Board of Commissioners included tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to tab number ten.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, hold on, hold on.
Yes, yes, yes.
I just want to chime in. First of all, let me say, Fred, great job, and I appreciate you going back and and revisiting this and taking a harder look and and trying to make sure we get this right. And as the Vice Chairman Robinson stated, I'm glad that we kind of took this route for now, and we'll look at it down the road. But my other question to add to that, though, Fred, is it possible that I I think this should go back and and be revisited with the Commissioners and anybody else, but we take it back to the committee? So, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we do that, let the committee kind of make a recommendation, a formal recommendation about what it looks like if the Commission decide to go through and go through that public hearing on top of if any other employees that could become a part of this as a as an overall, that comes from as a recommendation by the committee and let them take a harder look because there's some pros and cons in in this whole makeup of the entire employee or entire staff, as well as just the Commissioners and so on. So but but move forward with what we got. I'm saying move forward with what we got and not, you know, don't don't stall this. But I think this is, this is kind of done and ready to go. But let's look at the future and what that looks like. And I don't want to say rush you with the next meeting, but at least let the committee get a chance to weigh in and let that committee kind of formally come up with a a true recommendation. So you guys can do a little work on that. That will be my recommendation, Madam Chair, but I mean, it's kind of up to you, and I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much. A point well taken, Commissioner Mitchell. Again, I certainly am working with the will of the board here today. Again, I've just heard we're going to move forward with what we have at the table today, and certainly everything beyond that certainly goes to the committee. And then and then we'll make decisions accordingly, which will be the benefit committee. But today, you want to, we want to move forward with what we have at hand. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. A point well taken. All right, we're going to move on to our last but not least item today before I call for an executive session. It's tab number ten, Authorization to Approve an Indemnification and Whole Harmless Agreement in Regard to the I-20 Gateway Signage. Mark Teel.
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll we'll change this for tomorrow, but actually, this is for the I-20 landscaping at Liberty Road, Post Road, Lee Road, and Thornton Road, and it's part of the Georgia DOT permitting process.
Okay. Well, we have any questions about the approval of this indemnification? And that's a time-twister for me. Any questions? Okay, sounds good, Mark. So this agreement, certainly, we've been waiting on this gateway to move. I see that I, at Fairburn Road, that gateway certainly is under construction, and I was just wondering when ours would be. And you certainly, thank you so much for getting this on. Do we have an idea what this means? How long would it take for this to happen? When will we just in?
We're getting really close. First, we have to have the permit from Georgia DOT. Then we'll have to go through the bidding process to bid the project out. So that process alone is forty-five to sixty days. So you're probably looking at another couple of months.
Okay, the reason why I say that because I, it was shared with me that the perfect time to plant is around the fall. That's what we talked about last fall, so that's been a year ago. So I'm assuming we'll see some dirt moving around. I believe November is a good time, October is a good time to plant, according to research and literature that's out there. So you think we'll be ready to start turning some dirt by October?
As quickly as possible.
Okay, and then also, what about the gateway signage? How are we looking on that?
They're going through the permitting process as well on that with Georgia DOT.
Okay, we're ready. I'm, we've been dreaming quite a while. I'm just ready to see something, some action. And I know the lights, tired of the lights coming for the interstate, I-20.
Same on those. So they're starting on, they should be starting on some of them, but some of them are still going through the the permitting process with Georgia DOT.
Okay, all right, thank you. But just, I know you'll keep us posted. If you could just kind of keep the Board of Commissioners updated on those three major projects, they're certainly on my radar. I've just been trying to just not drive you all crazy by just keep asking the same questions. I just want to see some action. So let's see if we can see what DOT could do, or Georgia Department of Transportation to do to help expedite our request. Well, Board of Commissioners, you have any comments or questions before I call for an executive session?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, but but to your point, I I think the priorities of the county have been set for, you know, from beautification to the things that you believe are a priority. And I I'd hate for you to go through what I had to go through regarding them, them streetlights on Riverside with that splosh. In other words, like, come on, guys. Like, why does Madam Chair have to write this thing or try to highlight the priorities of this? I don't want you to feel as though, Madam Chair, that, no, it shouldn't take that. This is a priority. The public has embraced that beautification is important, that we need to line these things up. So I I recognize it's a process, it's a process, and we're, we do that historically. Oh, it's 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 them, it's they, it's their responsibility. Oh, well, let me follow up, but I I I think it should go without, like, how many times does the chair have to say it to say that this was important to her? to say that this was important to her? Right, now, I, I have no problem taking that. I'm, I'm just a discommission, but I will ride mine all day long for 18 months to get my streetlights for my citizens. But the chair shouldn't have to like, you shouldn't have to feel bad about the fact that, no, this is a priority. And, and we should, you know, move on this and keep up with it accordingly. So I just want to acknowledge that, like, no, this is a priority. This is something that we've been waiting on and to your point, it's a year later. And so I, I, I think that, that it goes with, I support that position, like, come on, guys, let's stay on that. And you, you're hearing her heart, but yet we're not moving. It's sort of like cutting grass, like, okay, y'all hear that what she's trying to get done, but yet, okay, we just sort of going through the motions. So it, it's about being awake and being aware in the moment, like, okay, now. So anyway, I yield, Madam Chair. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson, for just reiterating my concerns about our county. Our county must represent us and our voices and what we plan to do to entice businesses to move here and just make it a pristine feel when citizens come through the corridor. It, it, it is just, it nerve, it makes me very nervous that our county is dirty. And it bothers me and I know we have citizens that are complaining and we know COVID-19 has certainly pushed some things back. But as my mother said so kindly last night, she said, everybody's blaming everything on COVID-19. First of all, there's not a lot of movement. We need to see some things done. This is a perfect time to clean the county up because there's not a lot of people out there. So at least when the citizens ride through, they can see some cleanliness. And that's very, very important to me. And I will not stop until I get results. And that's the only thing I'm focusing on right now. Two things, COVID-19 and my, and the citizens' health and safety and then the beautification of this county. And I, but I believe if I concentrate on those two things, we can get it done. But I'm not going to be all over the wheelhouse. I'm keeping my eye directly on the, on the wheel because we got to get these things done. They're important. So with that being said, County Attorney, do we need to go into executive session?
We do, Madam Chair, for litigation slash legal.
Okay, thank you so much Attorney. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So, okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please start with your name and your response. And I'll start with District 1.
Commissioner Henry Mitchell, yes.
Kelly Robinson, District 2, yes.
Tarynia Carthen, District 3, yes.
Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairman, yes. We have a 4-0 unanimous vote and the motion carries. Board of Commissioners, I believe if you just keep your computers on and then we'll come back. Mark, does the instructions right, just keep our computers on?
Yes, ma'am. Log out this meeting and keep your MS Teams on.
Okay, citizens, we will, Douglas County citizens, send us the executive session and we will return to speak to our citizens. So thank you so much today for your patience and understanding. And I and the Board of Commissioners appreciate you attending our meetings virtually. Mark and Ken, you can take it from here. Well, Mark, you'll take it. All right, thank you so much TJ. Again, Board of Commissioners and the Douglas County Board, and the Douglas County citizens, thank you for your patience while we were in our executive session. We have returned and certainly I just wanted to reiterate the importance of this COVID-19 pandemic. We're asking that everyone continue to concentrate on the three Ws. Want you to please continue to wash your hands repeatedly throughout today, throughout the day. Also, if masks are recommended, highly recommended. You see signs out through the entire county. And also commercials are being played to encourage our citizens to wear masks. It's very important at this time of this pandemic. And also, last but not least, we ask that you continue to watch your social distance, distancing. It's very important simply because we're noticing a community spread because of congregating. When you have large congregations of citizens for some reason or people, period, the, the virus is certainly, we are host and the virus is on all of us and it starts, began to spread. So with that being said, we just ask that everyone, please just continue to watch your social distancing and be very vigilant with this virus. Because if not, I've said it repeatedly, if we do not take this virus serious, this virus will take us. Certainly, I want to yield at this point to our legal counsel, our attorney Bernard. If you could just bring us to speed, we'll be adding something to the agenda tomorrow. And certainly if you could just, just discuss that matter and just allow the public to know what our plans are for tomorrow.
Yeah, Madam Chair, with, with the board would so be inclined, inclined, I have prepared a revision to your first reading of your resolution related to the monument. I'd ask that it be considered for purposes under new business tomorrow for discussion if the board is so inclined or at such time as the board wants to take it up.
Okay. Lord, I believe with that, that is the will of the board. We will, County Attorney, we would like to have that resolution placed on the, I would like it placed on the agenda for new business tomorrow. And then we will review and discuss and approve or deny accordingly. So any other comments from the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, just, just to this point very quickly, I do have a poll out there on my Facebook page, Commissioner Kelly Robinson asking for the citizens in District 2 to weigh in on the movement of this monument. I just wanted for the record, as I always am transparent, while I can't do a town hall, I figured this is the second best thing to be able to get out there and touch the people. So I yield that Commissioner Kelly Robinson's Facebook page, the official one. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see my other two commissioners chuggling. Any other comments from you, Commissioner Carthen, Commissioner Mitchell? Okay, well, with that being said, we look forward to our meeting tomorrow. And again, Commissioner Guido was unable to be here today because of a family matter. I ask that we all send our prayers up to, for her and her family at this particular time. And Board of Commissioners, thank you today for your participation and your time and your tenacity and your talent for making Douglas County a place that we all would be proud of. Thank you, County Attorney, and also our County Administrator and also our executive team today and all our directors and most importantly to the citizens of Douglas County. Please stay safe and continue to adhere to the protocol related to COVID-19. This is a serious matter. And with us, all of us together can make this issue certainly. We could at least canvass it until a vaccine is available and developed. But it's going to take all of us to, to, to participate and all be committed and disciplined as we all weather the most unprecedented virus in modern history. So with that being said, I appreciate you Board of Commissioners. We had a great meeting again today. And I look forward tomorrow to our Board of Commissioners meeting at 10 o'clock. So thank you all and have a wonderful day. Enjoy the rest of your day. This meeting is adjourned.